We'll get started. Thanks very much for attending this meeting of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. The meeting is open to the public, we've not got anyone here today, but just to confirm, there's no items that contain exempt information. The meeting, as per usual, is being webcast and will be made available later through the council's website. Today, we've received no questions from members of the public. Could I just ask everyone, which of their phones are too silent? There's no fire test planned, and I will ask every member to introduce themselves first. We've got a couple of apologies from councillors Bellbin and Miskell, and councillor Smith as well. So if I can ask members to introduce themselves, and then I'll ask the officers who are here today to introduce them as well.
Councillor Angela Denzio, Chair of the Ableton Social Policy Committee.
Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing.
Councillor Zahira Nas, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Councillor Dale, Chair of Education, Children and Families Committee.
Councillor Mark Jones, Substituting for councillor Bellbin.
Councillor Milaish Parry, Substituting for councillor Miskell.
Councillor Joe Otten, Member for Dornotley, and Chair of Wasteland Trusting.
Sheriff Hamid, Council of Ecosso.
Councillor Michael Leverie, Vice Chair of Finance, subbing for Martin Smith.
Richard Williams, Member for Stanington Ward, and Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee.
Thanks, everybody. I'll start with my left.
Good afternoon, I'm Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer.
Good afternoon, I'm James Anderson, I'm Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Hi, Kate Josephs, Chief Executive.
David Hollis, General Counsel.
Craig Rocherson, Democratic Services.
Thank you very much, everybody. Just to confirm, there's no items while we're excluding the public and press, are there any members who wish to declare an interest in any items or business on the agenda today? No? Okay, thank you. Minutes of previous meetings, there have been quite a few, there's quite a few pages of minutes to take a look at, they begin at page 11 in the packs. Are members happy to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meetings that we held on 12th July, and the extraordinary meeting on 2nd of August? Okay, I see a few nods, no dissent, thank you. Item five is appointments to subcommittees, and to note that David, the monitoring officer, in consultation with the relevant whips, has authorised the appointment of councillors Steve Ayers and Mohammed Marouf to be substitute members of the Charity Trustee Subcommittee. So it's just to note, thank you. Item six, no public questions or petitions today. Item seven is new on our agendas, which is member questions, and we've got none received on this occasion. Item eight is the retirement of staff, and in the packs everyone's got, there's a list of staff who have recently retired in the last few months. So on behalf of everybody, we want to note their long service and commitment to Sheffield City Council. So I will ask everybody just to confirm that you're happy for us to note that and pass on our thanks to everybody who's listed in the report. Thank you. Item nine is our work programme. I'll ask Craig to just present about this, and just to flag on your desks, there is an addendum to the work programme, which has been emailed around today, and a paper copy is with you today, just makes a few minor amendments. Craig, do you want to just say something on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so members should have got a copy of the up-to-date programme, and they are asked to do three things today: approve the additions and amendments, which is set out in Appendix One, page 53; note the referrals from council on the 5th of July, they're in section two, and the proposed responses to those; and approve the consideration of cross-cutting issues, which are set out in Appendix One. And as Chair's mentioned, there are a few tweaks that we're recommending in respect of consideration of three items by Finance Committee and one by CPL, set out in the addendum.
Thank you very much, Craig. Any questions on the work programme, or comments people want to make? No? Okay, thank you. We're all happy to agree the work programme going forward then? Lovely, thank you all. Right, that brings us through to our major item for today, the medium-term financial analysis, and we're going to be joined by colleagues from the finance team, if you'd like to come up, thank you. And then if you could each introduce yourself, and then begin to present the report, after which we'll have a discussion. I'll hand over to you, whenever you're ready. It's a warm day in here, everything's packing.
Brilliant, thank you, thank you, Chair. So I'm Philip Burgrey, I'm the Director of Finance and Commercial Services. This report on the agenda today sets out our updated assumptions on the council's medium-term financial position. There's some important context to bear in mind as this report's considered. So funding from government remains uncertain, local government has consistently requested multiple-year financial settlements, and last December, the Department for Leveling Up Housing and Communities provided the financial settlement for 2324, which is the current financial year, and an indicative position for 2425. Detailed funding for next year is unlikely to be confirmed until mid-December, at the earliest, and we don't have an indication of that funding position beyond March 2025. Also worth noting is that inflation hasn't reduced as quickly as we expected, and interest rates have increased beyond our forecast. And when setting the budget, there will be a few impacts on the council from those assumptions. So our contract cost inflation will create pressure on budgets, there'll be increases in fees and charges, which includes rent, and those are usually increased by measure of inflation, but also our treasury management and our borrowing rates are affected, and those will affect returns from treasury management, as well as borrowing costs potentially, if we incur new borrowing. So after reviewing our assumptions, a summary of which are detailed in Appendix One to the report, on page 92 of your pack, the resulting budget gap is £61.2 million over the next four years, with a budget gap of £18.1 million next year. Section six of the report sets out how the future budget gaps are proposed to be allocated to committees, and this committee is asked today to approve the 2425 targets, and also to request that reports are presented to policy committees in the November meetings, which set out their proposals to meet these targets in order to deliver a balanced budget. This report also provides the committee with an update on the in-year financial position in sections seven, eight and nine. The current forecast as at the end of July is for a £17.6 million overspend. This is largely driven by cost and demand pressures in social care, and demand for temporary accommodation, for which the council is unable to recover the full cost from the Department for Work and Pensions. Now, the council set aside £70 million in reserves to support the delivery of a sustainable financial position, £40 million of that has been spent, and if the overspend this year results in at £17.6 million, there'll be £13 million of those reserves left. In the medium term, there are unlikely to be significant increases in government funding for local government, despite our increased costs of many of our services, including social care. In recent years, an increasing proportion of our funding has come from council tax. The referendum limit for council tax increases was 4.99% this year, and government have confirmed that that's the same for 2425. The 4.99% includes an adult social care precept of 2%, and our assumption is that the referendum limit will fall back to 2.99%, which includes a 1% adult social care precept from 2025 onwards. So our focus remains on delivering financial sustainability. We're improving the delivery of budget implementation plans, and work will continue to ensure that we deliver balanced budgets in future years. Our approach to this will include a focus on efficiency and productivity, in addition to cost control and demand management. And we're not working on this in isolation, we've got many partners, including from the health and voluntary sectors, who we work closely with to deliver good services and good outcomes for the residents and businesses within the city. So thank you for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee have.
Thank you very much, Philip. I think that sets out the context with which we now enter the budget-setting process for this year very well. Jane Lizzard, is there anything you wanted to add before I open it up? Okay, thank you. All right, and we'll go to councillor Mohammed, and then councillor Nas.
Thank you, Philip. So my question's a bit around the overspend at the moment, and what you see as a tolerant level, because last year we overspent by £5 million, and we had to use that as reserves. So is it safe to assume that we'll be around the £5 million mark once mitigations are in, or can we hope for a balanced budget next year? That's one question. Do you want me to do the other one as well?
Yeah.
It's a totally separate issue.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a couple of councillors' comments. So ask your second question, then I'll come to councillor Nas, thank you.
And then my second question was around the preparation for next year's budget, and the BIPs that were on offer. And last year, we had a traffic light system of red, green, amber for people watching at home. Green was the stuff that I think most groups took quite easily, amber was, this is, needs a bit more thought, and the red were what we call a red line, so i.e. the things that we rejected last year, are they going to be back on the table, or are we going to have some different BIPs that might have emerged throughout the year? So they're my two questions, Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Mohammed. Councillor Nas.
Thank you, Chair. As the Chair of the Finance Committee, I would like to begin by sharing my gratitude with Philip, Liz and Jane for all the hard work, and all the hard work of other finance officers, so thank you for that. It's no secret that Sheffield, like other cities across the country, has seen significant budget reductions due to central government. To put this in numbers, this is 856 less per resident. However, despite this, I am proud that we have taken a cross-party approach to try to lessen the burden for Sheffielders, and protect critical services like adult social care and children's services. I would like to thank the Deputy Chair, councillor Leverie, and councillor Tobey-Malison for their ongoing commitment and support. We have put our politics onto one side and put Sheffield first when it comes to the budget, I think that's really important. Demands for services are rising, and we have tough times ahead, but I know by tackling these issues early and proactively with cross-party support, we will continue to deliver for our great city Sheffield, so thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Nas. Come back to the team.
Councillor Mohammed, so your first question around the tolerable level of the outturn position, whether it's likely to reduce again? Difficult to say. I think the pressures this year, it's different to last year, particularly around temporary accommodation, and the pressure of the gap between what we fund and what we receive from DWP. I think that's unlikely to change unless it's a change in government policy, which means that, I mean, that total's nearly £9 million. It could well be that we aim for the outturn to be around that sort of level, and look at how we contain the social care overspends. So I think it will be a big challenge to get towards £5 million, which was last year's outturn, I think it will be more likely to be higher than that. In terms of the amount, I think it's also helpful to put it in the context of a percentage of the budget, and actually, our overspend at £17.6 million is 3.6% of budget. I think anything above 5% is a particular concern. Within 5%, I think is reasonable management, and obviously, we would like to get it down to much lower than that. But I think in terms of comparing ourselves to others, sometimes numbers look bigger and smaller, but actually, the percentage is quite a helpful metric to look at. So in comparison to others, actually, we're doing okay, let's not rest on our laurels and say we accept that this is the outturn position. We absolutely want to find as many mitigations as we can. In terms of preparation for next year, I'm going to hand over to Liz, because she was here, and to discuss traffic lights and BIPs, and whether reds are likely to come back or not.
Thank you, Philip. Yes, Liz Gough, Head of Finance and Commercial Business Partnering. I suppose in terms of the BIPs, we are asking for members to work with officers to come up with BIPs for 2425. I don't think anything necessary is off the table at this stage, so whether those red savings need to be reconsidered or reworked through, that would be an expectation for policy committees to review those. So hopefully, between now and November, that work will take place, we'll come up with some revised BIPs to be discussed and agreed through the process we set out last year.
Thank you. And just to debunk some of the weird things we say in this building, BIPs, for anyone who's not sure, they are budget implementation plans. No, no, it's all right, we're so used to, you know, talking about rag-rating BIPs, that we've stopped to think, what? Any further... I've got councillor Leverie, and then councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. Page 75, item 4.7, on the corporate pressures. We know that about the council tax hardship funds around £200,000, and £700,000 commitment with the lax. So in terms of the other items, in particular, Heart of the City Phase Two, what does that make up to in the £40 million corporate pressure? Now, we understand that there's been problems in terms of not getting the expected returns on the leases against the borrowing, so what is the gap? And what does that number look like? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Otten.
Oh, thank you. So, just a question about the HRA and the assumption around rent rises on page 80. Just, I'm just questioning the nature of that assumption, obviously, I think the 5% is the usual figure of the cap. So does that mean we're unlikely to see a kind of closer to inflation cap in the coming year, or do we expect that to be, you know, roughly inflationary anyway? And I guess it's the assumption that we are going to take the cap, whatever it is, in terms of this. And I guess, obviously, I see it in the context of the breakdown, obviously, the large part of the pressure we're putting in there is the council house repairs. Now, if that means we're planning to spend more on council house repairs, I would welcome that, even if it appears as a pressure in these figures, because clearly, getting on top of those repairs, when, on some counts, we heard yesterday, in terms of the numbers who've hardly shifted the dial in a number of years, has got to be welcome, but yeah, I don't know, can you elaborate on that assumption for me? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come back to the team, I've got a few more people who've indicated. I guess in this, as we're here today, it'd be useful perhaps to hear from any committee chairs who want to talk about the pressures they're dealing with in their portfolio areas, and also what is going to be done in order to mitigate those pressures. But I'll come back to the team first on those two, and then take another round.
Councillor Leverie will come to you in a moment, we're just trying to get wifi to connect. So we will give you a proper response to your question. Councillor Otten, in terms of the assumption of 5%, our forecast is for inflation to be 5.4% at September, which is broadly what we've based this assumption upon. If the cap is a different amount, that will be a question that we bring back to members. We would recommend that you take the level at the cap, whatever level it that's set to. The difficulty with the HRA business plan is that costs are increasing well beyond what the cap amounts are, and that just creates further pressure within the business plan for the HRA. So we would always recommend, as difficult as it is for members to agree, that rent increases are the capped amount.
Thank you.
We will come back to councillor Leverie.
We'll come back to that, and then, councillor Williams and then councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. On page 86, it talks about a significant overspend in education, children and families. As a point of clarification, excuse me, is that because the BIPs are not performing any better than last year? And if that is the case, is there any reason, particular reasons why? Thank you.
Councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. I might be able to answer your question, yeah, councillor Williams, but before I begin, I would like to thank colleagues in our committee, I'd like to thank councillor Marouf, who was the Vice Chair, and councillor Mohammed Marouf, as we are working closely together on the committee, especially looking at our budget moving forward. I think what I would like to set out is that despite everything Sheffield is doing well, even though there is an increasing demand at the front door, we are maintaining our number of children in care, and we are heavily focused on our early intervention and prevention work, which is actually helping us to keep our numbers of looked-after children low. We do need to keep focused on aligning that support to ensure that we maintain those figures, which are low in comparison to other core cities across the country. So over the last two or three years, there's been a stark increase in the cost of placements. So the average placement for a child at the moment is almost £5,500 per week. However, due to limited number of places and profiteering, the most complex care places can cost significantly more than that. With regards to the BIPs and the increase in foster carers, the recruitment was to, we were planning to recruit an additional 40 foster carers as one of those BIPs. The marketing is currently taking place on that, but the present numbers of foster carers are remaining quite static, but that is a national issue and has remained that way since the pandemic. We also have a BIP with regards to our care leavers' transitions from semi-independent to independent living. We're working with our care leaver cohort to ensure those that can live independently do so with the right support, and we're continuing to work with our looked-after children and care leaver service to ensure that the progress is done appropriately at the right time for those young people. I think what I would like to say is, when you're working with people, it's more complex, and people's lives become more complex, so sometimes savings are a little bit more difficult to make. So yeah, we've got a £2.2 million overspend due to placement costs, which we are working towards dealing with that. We're ensuring that the right cost replacements are being met by all elements, including education and health, because sometimes when our young people come into care, it's not, it's a joint, it's all of our responsibilities across all sectors to support those children and young people. We're reviewing our placement structure and looking to increase our supported accommodation, our special guardianship orders and our foster care provision, and we are reviewing our current high-cost placements. I think there's another area of overspend that we're looking at, which is our home transport, school to, home to school transport costs, and we're looking at that. There's been an 11.5% increase in the number of children being transported to school since last year, and we're reviewing our high-cost transport packages, and we're looking to expand our independent travel. And while I say that, what I don't want to happen is anyone watching this to panic that we're not going to be providing home-to-school transport, because we will be, but it will be appropriate home-to-school transport, and we'll be working around the independent travel for young people who are capable of travelling independently, then for their adult lives, they've gained more independent life skills. There's a lot of work going on, a lot more to be done, but we are working on it cross-party. The challenge is a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dale. Back to you.
Thank you, councillor Dale. I mean, I agree with what you've said, I think many of those issues are national issues, and certainly around placements and the cost of placements, that's not an issue that's isolated just to Sheffield or South Yorkshire, it's a national issue. And there's a table at the top of page 85, which sets out the proportion of BIPs that are being delivered by each committee. So the £6.9 million of agreed savings for education, youth and children, there are £3.4 million that are not being delivered within that forecast at the moment, for the reasons that have been set out. We will answer councillor Leverie's question.
Yes, thank you for your patience, councillor Leverie. So it's Heart of the City debt charges, we've increased in the council tax hardship fund, and there's the exempt accommodation housing benefits subsidy, which is highlighted in the report, that is also going forward into 2425, so that's what makes up the corporate pressures.
So what is the value for the Heart of the City?
It's £5 million. I'll get you a full breakdown of that, of all the split, and send that through.
Okay, any of the members seeking to come in? Okay. Well, I think it's worth just noting then that we do face significant challenges. Councillor Nas is absolutely right, that the figure of £856 per person that's been lost in support for this council's funding is nine, higher than the UK average of 581. That's, those figures aren't going to mean much, but 29% reduction here compared to an average of 20%, so a 9% higher reduction in our funding from central government than the average. And that's the context with which we're dealing with our budget process. And, you know, this, we're not just talking, looking at today's pack with a view to this current year, we're looking at the, this is a medium-term financial analysis over the next four years, and it is fair to say that two things would greatly help us over the coming period. One is fair funding, representing the, reflecting the level of deprivation and need in this city, but also multi-year funding settlements, so that we're not waiting for that Christmas present from the government to tell us how much money we're going to have over the next year. If we had certainty over the next two years, three years, our planning, ability to plan would be significantly enhanced. So they're just points to note, but I think it's really important that also, we recognise that we're doing this budget process proactively, responsibly, transparently and cross-party, and we're starting this process early, setting out very clearly a framework for how we're going to prepare this budget over the coming months. It will come back here to this committee in December, and then also, sorry, November, and then also in December, and then before that to all of the policy committees. So there is a big job of work to do to prepare this budget, but I think, you know, if we proceed in the basis which we've begun, transparently, cross-party and responsibly, then we will put ourselves in the best possible position. Okay. There are a series of recommendations that are set out at the front of the report. Are members happy to endorse those recommendations? Okay, all right, thank you all. Thank you very much indeed for your time today, and for the work that's gone in to get us to this point, thank you. Okay, the next agenda item is a decision about commissioning for the air conditioning, council's air conditioning and air handling service, and we're joined by Jason Peck. Thanks for joining us, Jason. Everyone has got the two reports in their packs, and, Jason, are there, perhaps you could just give us an overview of what we're discussing and deciding upon today? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Jason Peck, Contract Management, Facilities Management. I'm here today with two reports, first of which is for air conditioning, quite topical, I think, today. We have a lot of air conditioning, air handling, refrigeration plant throughout the estate, there's around about 800 pieces. We have a statutory duty to maintain this equipment, it's not something that we can choose not to do really, but we also have a duty to maintain it, make sure it works efficiently, doesn't wear out, doesn't break down unnecessarily. We'll be looking, the current contract finishes at the end of March 2024, so we'll be looking to procure a new contract for three years, a value of around £390,000, and in a nutshell, it'll be associated with its maintenance, inspection and servicing of the equipment.
Thank you very much, Jason. Any questions, Jason, about the commission decision we've got today? No? Okay. All right, then we'll move straight to the recommendations then. Is everyone happy to endorse a recommendation which is to approve the commission of an external service provider to deliver the servicing, inspection and maintenance of air conditioning and air handling equipment for the next three years, as set out in the report? Is everyone happy with that? Thank you. Excellent. Excellent. Right. Moving swiftly on then, Jason, we're on to the next commission decision, which is about security guarding and key holding services for the council. So back over to you. Thank you.
Yes, the security guarding, key holding contract. Again, the current contract, we have a contract in place, that's due to finish end of January 2024. So again, we'll be looking to procure a contract along similar lines, a four-year contract, quite high value on this compared to something like air conditioning, around 7.6 million. The security guarding and key holding contract is a cross-council contract. Every service has access to this contract, they can call on it as and when it's available, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, so for kind of short-term emergencies, that kind of thing, we've got a professional security guard incoming that we can call on as and when we need them. We also have an ongoing kind of standard requirement for guarding services at sites. The majority of these are out of ours, they're covered out of ours, covered at sites like Manelane and Stanifor Flore, where we haven't got staff on site, they maintain a presence and determine intruders, et cetera. And also, one of the main rules in there, they provide an alarm response. So we have a lot of sites, again, the alarm goes off at two o'clock in the morning, for whatever reason, we know, we've got a company that can attend within a timescale, find out what it is, whether it's a false alarm, whether it is an actual break-in or something along those kind of lines, take appropriate action. It's a four-year contract, as I've said, with a value of around about 7.6 million pounds.
Thanks very much, Jason. Any questions about this report? Yes, I've got councillor Agenzio and then councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. Having looked through the requirements of the security staff, one of them is to be SI, ICA qualified, does that include having DBS checks? I'm just mindful, I just weren't sure. I'm just mindful that sometimes our security staff will come into contact with very vulnerable people, and we're just wanting to make sure as an organisation that we are ensuring that all of our staff are DBS checked.
Jason, I'll just take councillor Agenzio's question as well.
My question is about in-house delivery, and I know that as an auction in 52, he says that the council doesn't have the capacity nor the expertise, but it would be useful actually to understand why we don't have that capacity, and if we were looking at bringing it in-house, what the comparative, you know, what would the resources expenditure be on our part to create that service in-house?
Thank you. Jason.
All right, Philip, with the first question first, regarding the top of my head, I don't know, to be honest with you, but the specification is basically getting drawn up as we speak, so I can check on that and make sure that it's included, and I'll come back to you on that to confirm. As regards to in-house provision, it's something that came up. I'm told back in 2016, there was a review done, I think under the old Kia caps contract, when it was in-sourced, there was a little look in terms of, is it something we can in-source? I understand I wasn't around at that time, but from what I understand is that there were a couple of, quite a few things, but one of the things was that a lot of the people that work on the security contract work quite long hours, and to bring them on to council with terms and conditions, it could be a financial detriment to them in terms of their actual income, and also there was some kind of pension implications, but as I said, I wasn't around. But the answer, the simple answer is that we haven't at this time for this particular tender, we haven't really got enough time to do that now, because it would be an extensive piece of work, because it's a cross-service provision, we'd have to talk to housing, people for, for, in terms of their requirements, et cetera, et cetera. But if the committees, if it's something the committee wants us to look at, by all means, pull the life of this contract, we can actually do some work, do some assessment and actually come up with some kind of a real answer, for want of a better word, in terms of a proper assessment. I'm happy, we're happy to do that, it's no problem.
Do you want to come back in there, councillor Agenzio?
Well, can I point on this point?
I've got councillor Prech first. If it's a different point, then...
Same point.
Okay, go on, and then I'll bring in councillor Prech. Thank you.
It is just to follow the point that you put forward there, Jason, about that. If it's in 2016, it's now some years ago since that review was done, for myself certainly I value that. I'm really thinking about, actually, what is the extra cost we pay for having it outsourced? What are the options, if that is what we've done to bring the staff that people see working for the council to be actually employed by the council? And then also about, we could have some thoughts at some point about how we change our structure of how people who come to services in person are greeted, and certainly, being Chair of Housing, there's an issue about people, say, presenting as homelessness, in-housing house, and the same applies to other people in vulnerable situations, where they come to the council, often in quite a state, needing services, needing assistance. And if they're first greeted by someone who's visibly dressed as a security guard before they can get to someone, it can, you know, be quite intimidating. It'd be nice if there was a way we could look at those services, and I just wondered if that could be done more flexibly and reasonably, if it were done in-house. Could we appreciate what you're saying about the scale of that piece of work, but if it could be done, I think it would be very helpful for us to know, maybe a note could be circulated if that work is done. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Prech.
Thanks. Just to follow on on this line of inquiry, I would have assumed when it was looked at in 2016, those terms, the workers' terms would have been chuped, so they wouldn't have had a detriment to their salary, but when we do investigate this, if we do investigate this, it would be helpful if we could look at both what monitoring costs we might save by, you know, having joint payroll, and also what overhead costs might also be saved from insourcing of, you know, are we replicating management functions to the moment, can that be cut down if we were to have in-house provision as well? I think that if we can have a cost analysis of where savings could be identified on an in-house service.
Yep, just to reiterate, no, it's not a problem at all, twice they spend some time looking at all those kind of different factors and stuff like that. But one of the issues in terms of the security guarding contracts, they do work long hours, so they work some maybe 40, 50 hours out of choice, and that's, they can supplement their income in terms of what they earn. One of the issues may be in terms of coming on to contracts, Sheffield contract terms, they're going to be to the 37-hour week, et cetera, and that, but we can look at all that in the round and see.
I guess we're not cheap and suffering on that.
You're probably right, but as I said, we'll have a look at it. It's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Whilst I think, you know, these are all, you know, points that are worth this committee being aware of and considering, the decision that we've got today is about a contract that's, you know, due to start soon, so, you know, we do need to be mindful of that. What we're being asked to recommend today, or give our approval to the recommendation, is that we approve the commission of security guarding and key holding services from an external provider for a period of up to four years, noting all the points that have been made, and not, you know, for a minute downplaying the importance of the points that have been made, but they are slightly different from the decision that we have in front of us today. Are there any points, questions people want to raise that haven't been covered? Okay. In which case, the recommendation, as I just read out, are colleagues happy to support that recommendation? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jason. Really appreciate you coming today. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. That concludes the items of business for today. There is a further meeting of this committee next month on the 18th, and we'll see you then. Thank you very much, everybody. Cheers.